I would like to stand for the pledge at this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you to those of you who came out in attendance this evening and for those of you that are tuning in from home. Before we go into the agenda, I would like to make an announcement. We, the Farmington School Board has been working very diligently with a search committee, and I'd first like to thank Stan Frieda and Angie Cardinal for your work with putting together the search committee for superintendent. Those of you that may be watching at home that were on the search committee, thank you on behalf of the school board for all of your effort. It was a very, what's the word I'm looking for? It was a pretty, pretty solid process where we had some really good candidates, but we are very proud to announce that we are welcoming back a new leader that has been with us before, Ruth Ellen Vaughn, our new superintendent of schools, so congratulations and welcome. And we're talking about having some type of reception so that parents can meet you, but I think we're going to talk about doing that after the school year starts, because in the summer months, it's, it's a little more difficult to, to pull that off. But, welcome back, good to have you here. Seeing that you're also a Farmington resident, it's kind of nice to have someone who lives in town to be back with us. Officially, really starting August 1st, I guess, finishing up some other duties up in Maine, but glad to have you back. So, do we have any public, do we have comments from the search committee before we go into public participation about the process or?
Would it be all right if I thanked the individuals by name on the search committee?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great. Our student from Farmington High School, she's starting her junior year, Clara Moore, was on the committee. Two parents, Barbara Bauer, Bobby Stormin. Our principal representative was Mrs. Fredette back here. Debbie Pate, our para-educator extraordinaire. Cynthia Sparks, our director of curriculum instruction and assessment. Alex Moran, he represented our budget committee, the town's budget committee. And Stan Frieda, of course, school board member, myself. And Mr. Petrie here stood in as an alternate and an observer on a couple of our first round interviews.
I forgot about that.
So, we had a very diversified team, lots of input on how we can improve for the next time around. Hopefully, we're not going to need that for a long, long time.
Anytime.
And, yeah, we just want to really thank them for their dedication, time, and commitment to our school district.
Thank you so much, folks. Thank you. Public participation. Nobody from the public tonight? Okay, we'll get into approval of minutes. Minutes of June 27th, 2016, non-public session two.
Moved.
So moved by Mr. Petrie, second by Mrs. Moran. Any errors or omissions?
I have a, just a clarification. There was a vote and it failed. The way that it's written, it's on page two. Can't find it. It should say that we voted unanimously against the motion. It says voted unanimously opposed the motion. Now I can't find it. Just have.
Page two.
Okay, hold on, let me find it.
That says in favor.
Maybe it's not even the right.
Oh.
Oh, it's the next one.
Is it the next one?
It's non-public, yeah, we'll get to that.
Oh, all right.
Okay.
All right, sorry.
Yep. Anything on the public minutes?
Oh, public.
Mr. Petrie, you're on the public.
No, I didn't have any.
I'm sorry, no, these are non-public session two. I'm sorry.
That's where I thought.
Oh, that's session four. Okay.
Did you have something for non-public session two?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
The fact that we don't have the name of the candidates, I think is a problem. I think it begs for transparency. Unless we put something in there that, about their, what is it? Their reputation, or things like that, or what we settled on for a contract. Some things that could be HIPAA, let's say. We could, we could not put that in there. But I think the names should be in there. I mean, once we get through the process and ask them the questions, and we don't touch on those things, because we can, we can inadvertently do that.
Okay.
You know, I don't.
There's no reason not to, yeah.
Right, right, but it's.
But I can put the name in there.
Well, it's, once, you know, we, we need to be careful because in session, and then before they're put out as draft, then until we approve them, I don't think they should be out yet. But once, once we get through the process and we make sure that everything is clean as far as reputation and with the settlement, because anything to do with their insurance, that's HIPAA, so we can't do that.
See, I was under the, oh, sorry. I was under the understanding that you use the candidate's initials and purposely keep their first and last name out for that exact reason, so that any of their opinion, they didn't have a chance to approve anything we're writing about what they've said for their opinion.
Transparency.
So, protection of their reputation would be to use the candidate's initials until a time at which they have the opportunity themselves to approve what's being written.
They would never have the opportunity, because they don't have, they're not part of the process.
So, that's why I'm not in favor of putting their name in.
Well, that's, who were they? Who did you interview? And you can't answer that question if you never bring it up.
Well, okay, let me put it this way. I'm not in favor of putting that information on the internet on their behalf.
Well, these are non-public, and it's.
Well, still.
We put them on.
Once they're approved.
That's why I'm in favor of either initials or keeping generic the candidate.
I guess that's, I think we should look at a matter of law. I mean, is there a law that says that we shouldn't, that we shall not disclose? I don't think there is.
The reputation point.
Then we should seal the minutes if it's a matter of their reputation.
I don't think it's necessary to put the questions and answers in anyway, and just to note that we interviewed them. And I think that's, the only thing you need to require, the only thing required to record formally is a motion. And that's all just, you know, narrative stuff we don't need to put in the document.
That is correct, but they're a good, they're a good background on what, what was asked.
But, but I'm with Angie. I would rather not have my name on there if I was interviewed and not hired, or if I said something that I didn't really say, and three years later I got to read it and I have no chance of correcting it. I would be careful about it. So, if I'm Joe Schmo sitting home and I want to know what kind of candidates did we even attract, and I want to know who we interviewed, how do I find that out?
You would know about the discussion, you would know about what their input was, but you would not know their first and last name.
Hmm.
Unless we do determine that this is public information, just putting in the application is public information, and therefore your name, address, telephone number? I don't think that goes that far.
I think that, I think that once they apply, it's public information, because we're a municipality.
The name of the candidate.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
The name is.
You used the name in the motion.
That's something we should research.
Yes.
Wow.
So, in the meantime, I think we should amend the minutes to put that individual's initials until we know for sure.
I don't think it should be initials either, because those are identifying marks.
Yeah, it's, we've been, we've, we've had court cases like that.
So, what do you want, like candidate one, candidate two?
Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm, once, once we get past that nothing was said publicly that they were impugning their, their reputation, I think, I think you, it should be disclosed, their name.
Okay.
Maybe just see what other districts do.
Well, that's not a good, that's not a good measure, because you'd get in trouble with that.
Well, if that's the case, then we should table if we want to ask a legal opinion.
Well, I, I'm.
Do we want to ask a legal opinion?
We can. But I worked a lot with, right to the law.
But we did it in the second one, and we, we used her name throughout the whole thing.
Right, I was going to move to change that to initials for candidate A or candidate one.
The second candidate, the first candidate.
I, all in what her name is.
I'm looking on page, oh, that page is outnumbered. Nine of 55.
Hannah, can you move that microphone down just a little bit, and then the other one towards you, just, because if Kelly does say, say something, she can't really be heard. Thank you.
In question four, it states her name, so.
Yeah.
I, I think in the past, we've always used the candidate's name, it's never come up.
So, the motion was to accept the minutes by?
It was Joe.
Motion by Joe, second by Penny.
Yeah.
And you made a motion to amend the minutes by initials or candidate, what do you want, what's your amendment?
I, I think initials for a candidate is suitable.
Okay. Do I have a second for, do I, do I need a second for that? Is there a second on that amendment?
To anywhere, a name, a full first and last name is referenced, change it to candidate initials.
Do I have a second? Okay, I don't have a second.
Fails.
That's right. So, now we have a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
Well, now Joe, Joe made the correction of adding the name, that's how this started.
Well, the name is on there.
Well, if the name is on there, that's fine, but I, I read some minutes that were not on there. But I, I just want to set the policy that we, because we have to make sure that the reputation, that, that the law definitely says if their reputation is impugned, we have to, it can be excluded.
Why don't we table these, find out what the actual legality is about it.
Is that a motion?
That's a, is that a motion?
Motion to table.
Motion. Can we do a motion and cite his motion?
No, no. A tabling motion is the senior motion.
Okay. Priority. You got a motion to table.
So, are we tabling all of the minutes?
Do I have a second, do I?
Yes, you have.
Do I have a second to table them? I'll second it. Any discussion on tabling these?
There's no discussion.
There is no discussion on table. I'm so glad you're here for parliamentary procedure.
Well, I know, I did through it.
I know, I know you have. All those in favor of tabling? Aye. Two, only two votes? Opposed? Three. They're not going to be tabled. Go back to the original motion, Mr. Petrie's motion, second by Mrs. Moran. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, three to two. Non-public session four from June 27th.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Moran, second by Mr. Petrie. Any discussion?
Yeah, that was the motion that I brought up in the last one.
Oh, about the vote?
What did you do in this?
Yeah.
So, you'd rather that we write?
Voted unanimously against the motion.
Any other errors or omissions? Mr. Frieda?
Yeah, the motion failed 4-0, shouldn't it be 0-4? It's, you know, a.
Correct.
I, I would.
So, you'd be 0-4.
It's always yes, no, abstain, it's always in there.
You should put, so, the four people voted against the motion. That, that way, there's no, there's no doubt.
And she did that.
Which I, I don't.
When you missed the vote, the positive vote is first, the negative vote is second. So, if it's.
Right.
And the negative, it would be 0-4.
Any other discussion?
No.
I think we should amend to remove the candidate's name on page two.
Okay, there's a motion to amend to initials, the candidate's name. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Frieda, any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Amendment fails, three to two. Any further discussion on these minutes? Hearing now a call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Three to two. July 5th, public session, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Cardinal.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moran, any errors or omissions?
No.
Hearing now a call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. July 5th, non-public session one.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Moran.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrie. Any errors or omissions?
Page two. I'm going to find it now. Somewhere in there, it's, my name is all in capitals.
Hmm. Oh, way down to the second paragraph from the bottom?
Question nine.
On question nine, just capital letters.
Yes, that's me.
Okay.
And then "me" is in there.
There's several of them, I caught a couple.
Okay.
Yeah. Can I move to table approval of these minutes? So that they can be reread, and there are a lot of errors.
Okay, motion to table because there are a lot of errors, second by Mr. Frieda. All those in favor of tabling? Aye. Opposed? Three to two. They'll be tabled.
They could be revisited, please.
Public session July 8th. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Frieda, second by Mrs. Moran. Any errors or omissions?
Mrs. Cardinal is all taps at the top of that, and I was absent, there's no list of absence.
On public session?
Yeah, under present, it says Mrs., Mrs.
Oh, okay, yes, yeah.
And I'm not listed as absent.
Okay, and list of, Mrs. Moran is absent, please. Anything else? All those in favor is amended?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Did you want to abstain?
Oh, yeah.
Mrs. Moran abstains. July 8th, non-public session one.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Cardinal.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moran. Any errors or omissions?
The same capital Mrs. on that page.
Yeah.
How do we spell Attorney Almond Dinger's name?
I think it's not spelled correctly.
No, it's not.
It's Dinger.
Yeah.
It's Dinger, right?
Yes.
A-N-G-E-R.
A-L-M-A-N-D-I-N-G-E-R.
D-I-N-G-E-R, yeah.
D.
You made that correction, others?
There should also be no names, because I questioned whether or not this one should be sealed. Am I on right one? Yes, I am. Mrs. Cardinal questioned.
Yeah, perhaps the former employee should just be listed as former employee, but I think the attorney names are fine.
Right. But all the other.
Okay, we're going to take the name out.
Okay.
And put former employee.
All the other minutes on this topic are sealed.
It's A-L-L-M-E-N-D-I-N-G-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you say M-E-N?
Yeah.
Actually, the whole thing should be sealed.
I agree. I would like to, motion to seal.
Yeah, we're in, we're in.
We can't do that.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, we can, we're in public.
Oh, we're in public, that's right. Good a motion to seal the minutes.
I'll second.
I do have one adjustment.
Second by Mr. Petrie. What, did you have something?
I have an adjustment, but it's not of a sensitive nature.
Oh, that's fine.
This was, this was a legal case, this should be sealed.
Yeah, we're still, it's, it's an ongoing case.
Yeah. All those in favor, seal these minutes for how long?
Five years.
Five years. Say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed. So, we're going to seal those.
We can still.
Yes, that's correct.
We can still approve them if we want to approve them.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The third to last statement towards the end, towards the salutations, bill to the FSV, it should be to the district.
Wait a minute, they're sealed, so you can't, you got to do it non-public to go over them, go over them.
To make the.
So, we'll do corrections to these in non-public later on?
Right, if, if there are any.
Okay.
You could, you could correct them in public, the only trouble is we can't discuss that.
Yeah. July 8th, non-public session two.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Moran, second by Mr. Petrie. Any errors or omissions?
Mr. Frieda's first question, all this is, is question one, what?
Ah.
That was profound.
That was profound.
Gravity rings. I'll go back to Phyllis.
Any other?
I'm going to sound like a broken record.
Motion to amend, I think you're doing.
Move to amend to replace the candidate's name with their initials.
I have a motion to amend the minutes to replace the candidate's names with initials. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Frieda. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion fails. Other discussions on these minutes? Hearing now a call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. All right. July 11th, public session.
It's removed.
Motion by Mr. Petrie.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. Any errors or omissions?
It's good.
Hearing now a call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. No opposed? July 11th, non-public session two.
She's skipping over non-public.
What did I do? Sorry, non-public session one. Is that a motion? Motion by Mr. Petrie, second by Mr. Frieda.
Because we've got two non-public session ones up for July 11th. You're on the first one, because we're going to need to amend that when we get down to the bottom, because M-N-O should be four, five, six.
That's right.
That is correct.
Yeah.
There aren't any.
Okay, any errors or omissions in this?
Oh, yes.
Comments? Yes.
Page three, the very top thing, Mrs. Stevenson, I don't believe there's a four in Stevenson.
I had that too.
So, I should move that.
Cat's out of the bag. Where it says questions from Mrs. Stevenson, there's a period followed by a comma. I'm sorry, Ms.
Where was it?
Uh.
Oh, towards the bottom, when she asked if we had questions for her?
Where it says Ms. Stevenson, there's a Ms., period, comma.
Oh, thank you.
Or my devices, got marks on it.
My, my hands are probably, I don't care.
Okay, no? Okay. Anything else?
Do we need to amend the motion?
Well, you said a name.
Do we, do we need to amend the motion at the bottom, so, because if we're changing? Never mind.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, sorry.
Angie?
I'm not going to waste everybody's time.
Hey, do just do it.
Okay, I move to change the candidate's full name to the candidate's initials.
Okay, motion to amend the minutes, second by Mr. Frieda. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment? Motion to approve the minutes, all those in favor of approval? Aye. Non-public session two, July 11th.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Moran. I'll second. Any errors or omissions?
We move to adjust the candidate's name to their initials.
I meant, move to amend, second by Mr. Frieda. Any discussion? All, yes.
Oh, is it, wait, that's.
On the amendment.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor of the amendment? Discussion on the minutes, Stan?
Yeah, the third, Mr. Shagman, why don't you, that's hanging too, and the, the third line from the bottom, Mrs. Moran, what, what do you know, I think it should be about a file.
Okay.
Right.
We're going to have to hold you back.
The Mr. Shagman piece, where?
Further down on the next page, it's, Mr. Shagman, what does it look like in your office when a student's being disruptive? The following sentence, it says K.R. Alfred instead of Mr. Alfred.
Sorry, Penny, with the air conditioner, I can't hear.
Um, I think it's the third page of these minutes.
Fair pen, okay.
It says K.R. Alfred. I think it's just saying Mr.
Should be.
Just below the space there, space below the page.
And if we could get the page numbers on the pages, that would be really, really Some of them have them, and some of them don't, especially when we're using the, the
Any further discussion on these minutes? All those in favor? Aye. Joe, was that an aye? Non-public session three from July 11th.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Moran, second by Mr. Petrie. Any errors or omissions?
First paragraph, the third paragraph, it says Mr. Barry instead of Mrs.
No.
Which made me think of Phyllis.
Yeah. Did you get that, Cynthia?
No.
She couldn't hear you.
Oh, on the first page, one of them says Mr. Barry instead of Mrs. I think it's the third paragraph.
Oh, correct. Thank you.
And then, on page two, affected, I'm going to find the sentence. It has a four, it has a four in it.
Which spell check.
Bless you.
Well, I'll look for it.
Actually, I found, you must like the number four, because I found a lot of fours in these minutes. I just found another one.
I bet it's anywhere where either an R or an E or whatever's above it.
Consistency.
Consistency. Has a four in it.
Oh, I see, there it is.
And then, it was Mr. Petrie's question, affected, has a four in it.
Just search for fours. Yeah, I moved to table this one to look for the typos, errors, punctuation, that sort of thing.
I only have one more.
I see a whole bunch.
Okay, we have motion to table, do I have a second? No second?
I think she couldn't fix it, I know.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, is there another one, Angie? Another typo that you found?
Um, yes, second page, one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph, the number four is in the middle of the word them. Back to class. Ah, thank you. Sorry. Three, further down, punctuation, what's your idea? Start with a capital. Two more after that, that next sentence should also start with a capital H. Just wanna give the opportunity to proofread.
I've got page three, the word habits has a V in it, seven habits, instead of habits. That was my last one, though.
The next page. Just capitals. V, government.
Was that what you?
No, I got another.
Mr. Petrie has one.
Uh, I would get in the habit of doing, using MS, because I don't believe you can reveal if person's married or not. And that, what is it, let me see. On the first page, we're doing non-public three, right?
Yeah.
Okay, where it says married, move to... Of course, she volunteered that, so... I'm not su... Pretty sure it's federal law that you... You have to be careful, very careful. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it in there.
So you're asking the minutes to be amended to say Ms., where they say Mrs.
Yes.
On all of the ones, or just this one?
Well, we should get in the habit of doing that.
Moving forward, you're saying that?
Well, I would do it on this one, and then moving forward from there.
Okay. Others?
I would move to just use initials instead of a name.
Motion to amend the minutes to reflect initials instead of names, do I have a second? No second?
Did we get that one out, where it says married? Where she volunteered that?
Do we have to?
It's a good habit to get into.
We can't ask, but she can volunteer us.
Right, but it's, if we get in the habit of not putting in minutes, then we won't make that mistake later on. If we know you can't ask, and you can't ask how many kids, you can't... So, if we, you know, it's a habit thing that everybody knows.
Any other discussion on these minutes?
Just one more typo, the second to last page, about middle of the way through, there are a lot of people who think that how we teach should be think.
All those in favor of the minutes as amended? Aye, opposed?
Yeah, I don't know if they heard that.
Okay, why, so...
Joel?
What?
I don't think they heard. It was two against. Or did you say?
Yeah, she saw it.
Yeah, but did, at home.
Oh, yeah, it was three to two, sorry. I'm just assuming they can see us too.
Well.
Why do we have another July 11th public session?
Because Cynthia thought it would be better since you did two pledges to have the 5:30 ones and then the 6:00. You had two different agendas that night, one for 5:00 meeting and one for 6:30 meeting. And you actually reopened as a 6:30 meeting with pledge and everything.
Did we have two different postings?
Yeah.
We did.
Okay. Then we don't have to amend these to say four, five, and six.
Can we say, uh, non-public session one and two, then, to distinguish between, make this non-public, uh, public session, I'm sorry. Make this, public session two.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I think that'd be good.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
It still makes these, like, really hard to distinguish on the bottom.
I would still go.
Four, five, six.
Four, five, six, right.
Do that, okay, so...
Move to accept as amended.
Okay, so we're gonna, um, a motion to accept these as public session two, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Petrie. Any errors or omissions? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. A motion for non-public session four, we're gonna amend it to say four. So moved by Mrs. Cardinal. Second by Mrs. Moore, any errors or omissions? Nothing? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed? Okay, motion for non-public session five, July 11th.
So will we have a three?
We're going from, this was public session two.
Right.
And then we're calling this four, five, and six, because this is one, two, and three under public session one.
Okay.
Just to distinguish it.
That makes sense, okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion for, um, non-public session five? So moved by Mrs. Cardinal, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Petrie, any errors or omissions? All those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed? And finally, non-public session six. So moved by Mrs. Moore.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. Any errors or omissions? All those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed? The minute marathon is over for the evening. New business, tuition rate for school year 2016-17.
Do you have that here packaged? It's hard to read.
Essentially, we have had a parent inquire about what the tuition rate would be for their child. So, just as a matter of procedure, I'm just bringing forward to you, uh, the worksheet, um, that shows that for grades K through six, the tuition rate for the 16, 17 school year would be $11,427. For pupils who are looking to come to the high school, grades nine through 12, it would be $11,205. So I'm looking...
So, excuse me, I thought you said the first one was K through six tuition, you meant K through eight?
K through eight, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, alright. Otherwise, it's free for seven, eight.
Now where are you going? So, um, if I could have your approval for this, so that I can get back to the parent who was inquiring about setting their child here, and of course, we'll make certain of your response from the state.
Motion to approve the tuition rate? So moved by Mr. Frida, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal, any discussion?
So...
Mr. Petrie?
Yeah, no, normally, we set those rates on December 31st, is this the rate that was December 31st?
Well, actually, no, because you, that portion of setting that rate December 31st was when you had a Middleton tuition agreement. And so that's why I'm bringing this to you now. The plan would be that probably in June or so, or, you know, a little bit earlier, but now that we don't have an area agreement or a tuition agreement with another district, I mean, we still have a little bit more time to be setting the rate. So, no, December 31st is now, it doesn't, doesn't matter, because that agreement has expired.
So, okay, so we're going back, this is gonna be the 17 year?
This is, this is coming school year, 16, 17, correct.
Okay.
Based upon what your proposed budget is for the 16, 17 year, what your proposed expenditures are.
I'm good with that.
One other piece that I would like to have clarified, um, is that for parents who are paying, we've never really established what kind of a payment schedule there would be. I would like to get back to this parent with some direction that, and my recommendation would be that we bill them on the first of the month, and they pay one month in advance.
I'll amend it. Is there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion to accept the tuition rate, second by Mrs. Cardinal.
Okay, I'll amend that to bill monthly.
Okay.
On first of the month, as you suggested.
And one month ahead.
One month ahead.
Okay, there's an amendment to the motion, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Moore, any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Okay. So then now the original amended motion is to accept the tuition rates for K through eight and nine through 12, and to bill one month ahead on the first of the month. Any further discussion on that? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye? On a food service contract.
Okay, the food service contract is quite a lengthy document. I know that it included on your agenda that you would be getting a separate scanned copy. In this particular case, since we're going from one company to another, I'm actually on my second review with the Bureau of Nutrition. That's part of the process. We dot our i's, cross our t's, making certain that the district is in compliance, we're not entering into something that does not comply with the USDA. So, the Bureau did give me, I think, 11 more bullet items that they saw that we should incorporate. So, there is a reason why you don't have it now, is that I'm still working on polishing it up, so that we do have a good contract that also protects the district. So, I'm meeting with Chartwells tomorrow, I'm not seeing that there's any issues. The process is moving along, and my apologies, just with my schedule and just many things going on, but that's why you don't actually have the final 44 pages.
Move to table.
Second.
Move to table, second by Mrs. Moore.
August 1st.
Moved by Mr. Petrie, all those in favor of tabling? Aye, I'm sorry?
There wasn't a motion to table.
Yeah.
He would move to table it.
No, I mean, there was no motion on the table.
Well, I think it's tabling the topic, I think.
Yeah, you don't have to have...
Tabling the topic, I think, is what he meant.
It's just been put on.
All those in favor of tabling the topic from the agenda? Aye, opposed? Old business, district website. Oh, yes.
New business?
Oh, new business, sorry.
Form of a motion, I would like to move that we make sure that the numbers are on all of the minutes, and that the sideways things are turned front way, turned real, so that they're easy to view when we see them in PDF.
Say that again.
I would like to, I would like to move that we formally say that we want to put the meeting page numbers on all the minutes.
Right.
And that if any documents are landscaped, that they're turned, so we can read them digitally.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? Second by Mrs. Moore, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any other new business? Old business, district website.
Who included it as old business again?
I think it was on there because of our discussion.
We had his new business last week.
Right. Well, I guess, I guess, why don't you give us an update? We were, we were looking at continuing to take off...
That's why Mr. Bailey is here.
Okay, well, what, okay, Mr. Bailey's here, why don't you take the microphone, Mr. Bailey, our tech director is here. So, at the last meeting, we talked about really initially doing some housekeeping, with getting Middleton things sort of off of our website, and putting it together and offered to them in some type of folder. How's that coming along?
It's coming along good, everything that references Middleton is off the website. And I'm in the process of bundling up all the Google, Google documents, if you will, um, that relate to Middleton, to send to, what, with Douglas? I mean, uh...
Governor, right, working?
Yeah.
Is that, do they want it that way? Did they, I mean, is that, that's something that they, they needed?
Well, my understanding is that they want the documents. That's just my understanding.
Yeah.
So the simplest way to do that is to just send them what's in our Google Drive that's, we use to put the Middleton documents on the website.
Yeah, okay. I think we just wanted an update on that, but I think now that you're on board with Ellen, I think in August, we're gonna spend some time talking about ideas that we have, sort of revamping the website, making it a little more user-friendly, updated more frequently, and I think we need to have a pretty frank discussion on whose responsibility that's gonna be, because that's been a little shady over the last few years.
That's a good point.
Yeah. Anything else on the website?
Uh, yeah, I move to remove reference to area agreement committees and other subcommittees that are related to area agreement withdrawal. I just think it, in the meantime, it'll generate confusion.
Okay, so a motion to, to, uh, remove area agreement language and discussions from the website? Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Frida, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Okay, so we'll get on that.
I just wanted to let you know that it's already been done.
That would be under school boards. When you click on school boards, um, there's headers referencing those, and then when you click on the subcommittees, um, there are subcommittees listed there that are no longer applied to our district.
I, I'm sorry, I have no idea what you... I can't hear you.
Do you want me to repeat?
I can repeat, but, um, so...
It's the air conditioner, can we just cut the air conditioner, I mean, we're almost...
I think it's easier to just show you.
Well, yeah.
Would that be alright?
Would you like to?
Would that be useful, if I just show them?
Quick in the end of the...
Okay, that's much better.
Oh, I can hear you.
Well, don't we have to keep those, I mean, we, this district was part of those minutes and such, we need...
The minutes you have to keep, you have to keep them.
I don't think we need them on the website.
No.
I mean, we're just, to me, it plugs it up.
My motion was purely about the website, not to purge any documentation.
Perhaps, maybe, maybe I'll, I'll offer an amendment and say, can we set up an archive page and put things in the archives?
Well, it's not an amendment, it'd be a new motion, so do you, you wanna do an archive, archive? We've already voted on the motion.
Yeah.
We did?
We did.
But can you specify to Mr. Bailey what you just said a few minutes ago? Because he knows what you're referencing.
When you click on school boards, so all of these various headers show up, these links show up?
Those are the sub-pages for the school boards.
Right, so area agreement committee, that's no longer about a committee at this time, and then there's several here.
There's subcommittees, yeah, we can get rid of those, too.
So, not to get, not to purge any documentation from any decisions or anything that's been made, but, you know, if we list these as our active current subcommittees, that's very misleading. So area agreement, Middleton Building Subcommittee, Middleton SAU Withdrawal Study and Planning Committee, and Withdrawal Subcommittee.
Right.
Those should all come off this side.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Alright. Any other old business?
I'm not interested now.
What?
I, I gave it to you. What I just asked you about.
I mean, I'll bring it up, we, we recently had a concern from a, from a resident on School Street, that there were some other folks that were doing, some neighbors doing some work to the, the grounds of the School Street building. And I had a brief conversation with the resident, and asked him, even though I, I think that he was just trying to help us out, I asked him not to go on the property and do any work to the property, and then I did give Larry a call, and Larry was able to send a crew up to just sort of clean it up. It's one of those things that we don't use, so I was sight on the mind sometimes, but we did get the grounds cleaned up, so that the grass wasn't, you know, feet high above the cracks in the pavement, so it was addressed, and if that resident's watching, thank you for letting us know, and we did deal with it right away, so. I guess I would, yes, oh, Larry. Sorry, I got it because people at home wanna know what's being said.
In regards to what you just brought up, I'd like to ask the neighbor's fence that was put up, I was told that they gave, they were given a variance to put it on the property line.
Okay.
Now there are some, three or four shrubs, they look like landscape shrubs that are there with tall grass. I'm assuming that that is now on school property, and I would like the board's direction as to whether you wanna leave the shrubs and cut around the grass there, or take the shrubs down.
Were they recently put in?
They've been there, they look like they were put in as a border.
Oh, I see what you mean, they were there originally, and then a fence recently went up on the other side.
The swimming pool was taken down, the fence was put up, so now they're on the, the outside of the fence, which is actually, I believe, school property.
Yeah.
You got a variance?
That's, uh, what I was informed.
How can they get a variance, that, before?
They gotta go for the zoning board, and I hope they'll be on that board.
All I know is I was told by the interim superintendent that he talked to the code officer, and they were granted a variance to, or granted permission to put the, to put the fence on the property line, they didn't have to set it back from the property line.
Can we check on that, Lori?
Yes, absolutely, because I'm not aware of what, of what, um, transpired, so I think it's important that we have the right to...
When, when the construction started to occur, I did call our... When, when the construction started to occur, I did call our past interim superintendent and said, could you at least look into it with the code enforcement officer? Make sure that everything is kosher.
Yes.
And he told us that, did he tell us? Maybe he told me.
No.
That everything was fine.
I was told that they would...
But I didn't hear the part about being on, on our property in a variance, that I did not hear.
I just heard that they were given permission to put it on the property, that they didn't have to set it back from the line.
That's a difference.
Okay.
Given permission.
Why don't we check into that?
By who?
By who, yeah, good, good question.
Yeah, that's a good question. If there is, there's that.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to find out, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Any other old business? Any public participation? I will say, I did want to also add, in addition to the announcement on, on hiring a new superintendent and welcoming with Ellen Vaughn, we'd also like to welcome Cheryl Peabody, who will be Assistant Principal at Henry Wilson and Athletic Director for the District, and Cindy Berry was rehired to be our Valley View Assistant Principal. And both search processes were very thorough, and the Board has settled on an administrative team, I shouldn't say settled, we have decided to hire and administrate the two additional members now to the administrative team that we're very proud of, and, and we believe very, very strongly that we have some very solid leadership at the building levels, so. From, from Valley View, right up to the SAU, we are very pleased and have a lot of confidence in the, in this, this administrative team. So, we're looking forward to a great school year. And since there's no other public participation or anything, I'll...